My name is Doug Beavis. I'm the Director of Business and Government Affairs for the Upper Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce. I would like to welcome you to the City of Oldsmar Candidate Forum for Oldsmar City Council, Seat 1. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for moderating this event in this new, modern age. We've got Beth, Doris, Ellen, Karen, and Sue that are on board and going to help us. And with that, I will turn it over to, I believe, Beth, who is going to be the one moderating this evening.
Okay, hello and welcome to the forum. I am the moderator for the evening, and with me is Sue Cornet, who will be doing the time signals, Doris, who is helping with the slideshow, and Karen, oh, Karen's on now, Karen, who is handling the questions for the audience. And I'll explain that in a minute, how we're going to be working that. We would encourage the audience to be muted and also to turn off their videos for the best sound that we can produce for the evening. The rules for the forum tonight will be, first of all, the forum is being recorded and will be available to individuals. But we encourage people to use the forum in its full sequences, so that we're not picking out particular soundbites from one candidate or another. Our intent is to have a very, very fair procedure and a fair use of the recording afterwards. We'll start the forum with each candidate having two minutes to tell us something about themselves. After that, we will alternate questions, and candidates will have one minute each to answer the questions. And we'll go through questions, both that the League has produced as general interest questions and also audience questions, some of which we've received earlier today and some of which we'll be receiving as this forum continues on. Audience members are muted, but we would love to hear your questions, so enter them into the chat. And then Karen will pick them up from the chat and relay them to me, so we can have them be part of the forum. The purpose of the League is to research, educate, advocate, and encourage voting, and encourage knowledgeable voting. We serve voters and we promote good government. We're nonpartisan, and we are non-political in the sense that we don't support political parties or political candidates, but we do get involved in policy decisions for the benefit of the community. If you would like information about the League of Women Voters, our phone number is listed, or go to our website, lbwnorthpanellusorganization. And that is our only announcement about the League for this evening. So later on, we'll talk about the voting issues. So we will start tonight with a two-minute opening, and we will start with Steve Graber first.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Graber, and I'm running for Oldsmar City Council, Seat 1. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Upper Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce for holding tonight's event. For those who I haven't been able to meet yet, I'm a husband, and I'm a father, and I'm an attorney. I received my bachelor's degree from Florida State and my law degree from the University of Dayton School of Law. I grew up in a family dedicated to public service, and I'm fortunate to have learned about the importance of holding public office and being a public servant from my father, who served 12 years as a member of council in my hometown. My wife Kelly and I love Oldsmar, and we are absolutely proud to be raising our two-year-old and our four-year-old here. As soon as we decided to raise our family in Oldsmar, I made it a priority to provide the same example to our kids that my father set for me and my four brothers and sisters. In terms of service to the city, I currently serve on the Board of Adjustment. I serve as a sole member from the City of Oldsmar on the Forward Pinellas Citizens Advisory Committee. I'm a friend of the Oldsmar Library. I'm a member of the Oldsmar Historical Society. I previously served as the Vice Chair of the Ordinance Review Committee, and I'm a proud graduate of the 2019 James Miller Citizens Academy. It's been a goal of mine to serve on council since I was a child, but I knew I couldn't run until I learned how to do the job. But through the education I've received, serving the community, and attending countless city council meetings, I'm prepared to confidently ask you for your vote, because I know I'll be ready to go on day one. My main goal during the campaign process is to listen. I know there's portions of the community who don't feel like they're being heard right now. I want to make sure that I'm a sounding board for them, as well as make it clear that their concerns won't be ignored if I'm elected. Thank you again to the League and to the chamber. Being able to have this opportunity and to be an advocate for the citizens of Oldsmar is truly an honor and a dream come true. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And now Pamela, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you to the Upper Tampa Bay Chamber and to the League of Women Voters and City of Oldsmar for making this candidate forum possible. And to the voters who are watching this, thank you for taking an interest in your city government. My name is Pamela Sattle. I've been a resident of Oldsmar since 2009. I'm married to an educator. My husband and I live in Forest Lakes, and we've been raising our son, who is now 15, here in Oldsmar. This is our community. I am the former manager for Pinellas County Government and, for the last 11 years, a small business owner. My company, Light Shine Media Group, owns Good Living magazines. What I am able to bring to the Oldsmar City Council is my wealth of experience, my expertise, and my relationships that I've built over the last 16 years of being in various leadership capacities here in Pinellas County. This culmination of experiences can directly benefit the citizens of Oldsmar. I look forward to the opportunity to bring all of my experience, plus my fresh perspective, my positive energy, and my PR skills to make the great town of Oldsmar even better than it already is. I invite you to visit my website, votforpam.us, and there you will see a full resume of my accomplishments. You'll also be able to review information about my campaign. Please also review my endorsements, which includes the Oldsmar firefighters and numerous elected officials that I have worked with over the years. They have placed their trust in me and, through their endorsement, are vouching for my character and my ability to get the job done. They have seen what I can do. I am the kind of person who produces results. The people and businesses of Oldsmar deserve qualified and proven leadership to navigate us through the next few years. My priorities are government transparency and increased citizen engagement, a strong showing in our arts and recreation programming, supporting our business communities, and city branding, and a family-friendly plan for the downtown development area.
Thank you very much, Pamela. Now we'll move to one-minute questions, and I want to explain. Those of you who are following the chat will see different questions asked in the chat, and some will not be asked tonight, because we have a different format for them. We screen all of the questions. We sometimes combine questions to make them appear more sensible or more logical. So what you see in the chat may not be what you get, but it may be exactly the question you get. So I just want to explain that for our audience, that things will not be perfectly read. I'm going to start with five general questions, and then I'm going to move to five questions that were submitted by the residents of Oldsmar. The first question, and Pamela, you'll go first this time. You'll have one minute. "Oldsmar's motto is a great place to live, work, and play. What about our city makes this true?"
Well, one, it is a great place to live. I value the community environment that we have. It's a great place to work. I think that people who are fortunate enough to work here and live close enjoy a really great quality of life. And of course, we have lots of opportunities to play. Our parks, parkland. What I would like to see is more recreation opportunities for a greater proportion of our citizens, so that they can play according to their interest levels. We have, I think, not enough for our older residents, our senior citizens. We don't have a teen center. We don't have programs for moms with young babies. So I'd like to see us do more things to support our businesses and to do more playing with each other.
Great, thank you. And now, Steve, same question for you. I'll repeat the question. "Oldsmar's motto is a great place to live, work, and play. What about our city makes this true?"
I absolutely agree with the motto, especially "live, work, play, and stay." It's exactly what we're doing. My wife and I fell in love with Oldsmar, and that's why we're raising our young children here. They're two and four. In terms of the work the Chamber of Commerce is doing to advertise our city, to attract new businesses, complete advocate for that as well. I think with the recreational opportunities that are here and the enhancements that are coming, the repairs to the BMX track, the renovations to the Cypress Lake or Cypress Forest Spray Park, and the enhancements to the Oldsmar Trail, and the Plans for a Community Center are all things that I'm an advocate for and want to see done, because my children will be growing up here and being able to use all of those enhancements and all the different opportunities that are presented for recreation. So "live, work, play, and stay," it used to be just "live, work, and play," but "stay here." Create opportunities where people know that Oldsmar is the place to raise your family.
Thank you. And now, because we're all...
Beth, could I just take one second? We want to see if we... Our global camera is not grabbing Pam. If you give us just a second, we want to do a test on it. Be louder for you and see what, one, two, three, four. Al, can you grab over here?
Yeah.
Al, okay.
Just, you might need to push forward a little bit, so I can hear you. Sorry, Beth, thank you.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, we're alternating the first answers. So Steve, you're going to go first in this one. "What do you see as the city's biggest challenge over the next two years, and how will you overcome this?"
Thank you for the question. I think with the year we just came off of, not knowing the economic impacts of COVID is going to be a challenge. From the city manager all the way on down, and with the council and the decisions we'll have to make, we'll have to understand what exactly we need to do and if it's going to impact our budget in the process. In terms of building and development, with the contract that we... and the negotiations that just fell through last council meeting, January 5th, we have to move on to hear different developers' plans for downtown. I think with that, what my goal is, is to see shovels in the ground. But the biggest challenge, I think, will be seeing what the economic impact is and adjusting to that, and then beginning and implementing plans and getting shovels in the ground to start building downtown, which is what we've all been waiting for for the last several years.
Thank you. Pamela, same question. "What do you see as the city's biggest challenge over the next two years, and how would you overcome this?"
So I have to agree that, looking at the fallout post-pandemic and how we recover from that, as a city, looking at the budget and how revenues may change, and maybe some hard decisions that have to be made to sort of maintain our current standards, but also maybe dealing with some budget issues. Also, our business community, we need to make sure that we are doing whatever we can to support our existing businesses, that they are able to continue to thrive. Not having our businesses after the pandemic would not be a good thing for us at all. So we need to take a look at our business community. And then recruiting. We want to bring new businesses in, and we want to grow, and we want to grow smart. And doing that as we adjust post-pandemic will be our greatest challenge.
Great, thank you. Our next question goes to Pamela first. "What is the biggest opportunity for the city over the next two years, and how will you make this happen?"
So I think a lot of people would say our greatest opportunity is to come and fully develop the land that's adjacent to City Hall and to make something tangible out of the downtown development area. And looking at the fighter plan and things that are proposed, actually, having a strong vision and a strong plan and a strong brand for our city is our greatest opportunity, because if we can create that to be a destination where the people of Oldsmar want to go, we want to visit there, we want to spend our weekends, we want to bring our grandparents and our kids, and we want to walk through that, and we want to have some ice cream and maybe a sandwich, and maybe see a show in the park. And if it becomes a destination for the people who live here, if we can create that and make that happen, that would be our biggest accomplishment. And then outside of that area, taking care of all of the other businesses, the neighborhoods, and our recreation departments, and a recreation department and programming to do more for more residents is also an accomplishment we can achieve.
Thank you. Steve, the same question to you. "What is the biggest opportunity for the city over the next two years, and how will you make this happen?"
Certainly downtown redevelopment presents a tremendous opportunity, not only to establish new businesses in the area, but to give the citizens a place to celebrate and gather as soon as we're able to do that and return to some sense of normal. Also, the other opportunity that I see from the conversations that I'm having with people is to get more citizens involved. We have the advisory committees for a reason. We have the Citizens Academy for a reason. There's a lot of people that don't think that they're getting heard, or they might not know what's going on in the city, and I've been answering a lot of those questions for them. But I think that we have a fantastic opportunity to educate everyone about what's available and how they can get involved in the different time commitments that are there. We also have a great opportunity with the BMX track being repaired. That might take a little north of the two years of your question, but I know that Gator Nationals has already pledged to come back once the track is fixed, and it's certainly going to be providing much more economic boon to the city once we're able to attract those visitors and that event. So it's not just one big opportunity, it's multiple, in my view.
Thank you. Now, take a breath, because then I'm coming back with another question for you, Steve. "What has been the impact of coronavirus on Oldsmar, and what should city government do to address the challenges of coronavirus?"
The direct impact, we already saw when we were dealing with the water bill issue. There were several citizens that were coming out to speak about it. And what we had to do was see if we could utilize an emergency fund and a grant program because of the people that were impacted by the increase in the water usage. Another thing that we've seen specifically to Oldsmar was our unemployment rate was around 4.5% pre-COVID, and then rose to around 14%. And a lot of that had to do with some of the restaurant workers and the other people that lost their jobs. But there were some people that were making more when the unemployment benefits were coming back, but, and so they didn't want to return to work, because they weren't making the same amount of money. Since then, the unemployment rate has dropped, but not back to the 4.5% that it was pre-COVID. So we've certainly seen significant and direct impacts on our economy and our population.
Great, thank you. Pamela, same question. "What has been the impact of coronavirus on Oldsmar, and what should city government do to address the challenges of coronavirus?"
Sure. I understand that people may not be able to see me on Zoom right now, so I apologize if you're not seeing me. But to answer your question, the pandemic has been just so multi-layered. You're talking about unemployment, you're talking about our small businesses, restaurants. And we've been trying to go to as many local restaurants as we possibly can, doing takeout orders or trying to dine in whenever we can, because it's just critically important that we support our local businesses as much as we can. And, but yet, you know, you look at AMC Theater and wonder, you know, is it going to make it back? And that's a huge loss for our community if it doesn't. So really supporting those small businesses is going to be huge, and then supporting our population, and then helping people ease back into events and happenings when we can start coming back and gathering again and doing it in a way that people feel safe, but can start to connect with one another again. I think we've really missed those opportunities to connect.
Beth, if I could, Beth, if I could, for the people that are watching at home, Pam is on camera, she's... And so is Steve. If you right-click on somebody that doesn't have their camera on, we just found this out tonight, if you right-click on somebody that doesn't have their camera on and put, I think it's down at the bottom, click "Hide All People Not on Camera", and you should only see five screens, and it'll be Pam and Steve and our two moderators, and then a combined camera. Hopefully that helps. Sorry.
Okay, great, thank you. And the next question goes to Pamela. "Should Oldsmar do more for its low-income residents, and if so, what?"
So that's a really good question. And one of the aspects to me, if I'm elected, is that I have so much experience working with agencies that serve our families, our diverse families across the area. Good Living Magazine has worked in partnership with the Juvenile Welfare Board and with many of the mental health agencies, with our neighborhood centers. And so I'm very familiar with the programs that are available to our county residents. I'm also, as past marketing director for the county, responsible for educating citizens about those programs. And so what I would bring is sort of knowledge to Oldsmar and be able to look at how we can bring more things from the county into our local area. Many of those programs are at the county level, so having a good relationship with the county and knowing what those programs are to be able to maximize those programs for the residents of Oldsmar is something that's really important. And also, you know, part of the communication process, making sure people are heard so that we know what their needs are. That sort of citizen engagement is really important to me.
Great, thank you. Doug, I have a question. Pamela and Steve are showing that they're muted on the screen. Is that true?
They're muted on their laptops. It is picking it up through our central sound system.
Okay, I'm just having a difficult time hearing Pamela's answers at times, that's all. Sorry. Steve, I'm going, same question to you. "Should Oldsmar do more for its low-income residents, and if so, what?"
Well, I think the connotation there is that, of course, we should always do more. It's what we want to see happen with the lower-income families, as Pam alluded to, is educate them about the opportunities that exist in Oldsmar. I'd also be an advocate for creating a citizens committee that's targeted at making sure that we address what the issues are. I think if we don't know what's going on in those communities, if we don't have any input from the people that are living in the lower-income neighborhoods and to what the actual problems are from the front door, it's difficult to come up with a plan as to how to create more opportunity for them. So absolutely, the answer to the question is, yes, we should do more. In terms of direct things to do, the best thing to do would be to reach out to everyone and speak to them about what problems that they're seeing.
Okay, great, thank you. Now, the next series of questions were sent in by residents of Oldsmar. So these are the things that they want to know about you, and Steve, you're going to go first on this one. "What do you think would be an effective way to include more citizens in large financial decisions, such as the $3 million BMX track?"
Yeah, we just discussed that at the last council meeting on January 5th. And what council discussed was potentially having more signage in town to let everybody know that there'll be town hall meetings. I think the city does a fantastic job now of putting everything on myoldsmar.com, having the agendas put up early, letting the citizens know this is what's going to be discussed. I think the problem is, everybody has busy lives. So if it's not routine, like it is for me to show up to council meetings, you may not know that these things, these decisions are being made. However, in terms of the amount of money being spent on the BMX track, there was certainly concern that was raised. The issue was, I think, that it had been discussed before. So if there's more signage in town that's needed, if there's more education that needs to be sent to the residents in order to let them know these important decisions are being made, I'd be all for it.
Okay, great, thank you. And Pamela, same question. "What do you think would be an effective way to include more citizens in financial, large financial decisions, such as the $3 million BMX track?"
Yes, well, I think that's an excellent question. One of the things that I very strongly stand for is transparent government, and especially when it comes to budgets and citizen engagement, when it comes to things that are of change or of large dollar amounts that are new. What I'd like to do is sort of replicate some of what Turpin Springs does with their citizens and maybe having the council create a policy when there are certain dollar amounts in the budget that there would be a special meeting about that item. Also, the City of Safety Harbor has a wonderful communications program to reach out to their citizens, and I'd like to see about bringing that to Oldsmar. Social media and improving our presence with social media, that's a challenge. And something, though, that I am equipped to help the city solve, because we do need to reach our citizens more, more often. But we need to have actual policy about involving citizens in certain decisions.
Great, thank you. And Pamela, you are first on this question, which seems to follow directly from what both of you have just been saying. "How can you make it easier for residents to find information on the city agenda?"
So that's actually my question. So I've been publishing a magazine for the last 11 years. Reaching families in Pinellas County has really become my science. It is a challenge as people move away from traditional media to digital media, new media. And so we're actually scattered more than we've ever been and harder to reach. But this has been something I've been working on for 11 years in trying to get information out to families in Pinellas County. So that same issue exists here in Oldsmar. And so we would need to really take a look at how citizens want to get information. So I'm a big fan of surveys, so you can actually take a survey. You can link to it from my website. I want to know what people think, and I think the use of some research tools can help. But that we also need to be very intentional about our communication plan to citizens, and writing that plan is something that I could do very well.
Great, thank you. And Steve, how can you make it easier for residents to find information on the city agenda?
Well, the city agendas are listed on myoldsmar.com under the Government tab, so they're certainly all there. Whether or not the citizens know that, it seems like that's becoming an issue. There's also a system that the city has in place to send email alerts about upcoming meetings, and specifically, city council meetings. If we could utilize that, if there would be a way that we could reach out to the residents that would be interested in receiving those, and set up an email listserv to send those out as soon as they're generated, then it'd be direct communication with the voters. If social media would be the platform to do it, to let everyone know the agenda for the January 22nd city council meeting is up, you'd go and check it out, then that would be something else to explore. I think there's ways to get the information to people. It's just a matter of which way do you want to receive it? What's going to be the best way and the most convenient way for you to view that information?
Okay, great, thank you. And at this point, I'd like to remind people who are viewing this forum that they are welcome to submit questions for Pamela and Steve. Just enter them in the checkbox, and we will try to get them answered for you tonight. Okay, the next question goes to Steve first. "There are many citizens who would like to see an art center in Oldsmar. What steps can you take to help this along?"
I am one of those citizens who wants to see an art center in Oldsmar. And I've got a two-year-old son who dances right along with his four-year-old sister, and I know that both of them are going to want to join the arts and be a part of plays and attractions. Most recently, at the most recent council meeting, there was a discussion about the Penny for Pinellas program. Part of that was actually to review and decide about the viability of a black box theater, which would provide that center for the arts. I think that should be explored, and any option and every option should be explored to enhance it. Also, through conversations that I've had with people, I think with the Center for the Arts, which would allow for plays and musical performances, it also applies, it provides a gathering place if businesses wanted to conduct meetings there and utilize everything around Oldsmar, that would assist in that. So I'm absolutely all for it, and whatever I can do to get it, I will do.
Great, thank you, Steve. And Pamela, there are many citizens who would like to see an art center in Oldsmar. What steps can you take to help this along? What steps can you take to help us along?
So I have been a participant with the North Pinellas Arts Council and involved with some of their programs with public art. So what I'd like to see is more performing arts all across North Pinellas. There's really a need in this whole North Pinellas area. So Oldsmar has an opportunity to not only do a theater for performing arts, but a larger center, that's a community center that could have visual arts as well. Art makes us human, and the more that we can do that for our citizens, the better. And that's citizens of all ages, from our young kids and helping them develop their skills to our older residents. It brings them needed interaction and stimulation, and all of those things are very positive for our community. So the more that we could do to actually think beyond theater into a larger community center where we could do arts programs, classes, where we could have mentors come in and work with people to teach woodworking or needle crafts, and we're actually able to to bond together as citizens, that that would be really positive.
Okay.
Can we ask that you, if you are watching, that you please turn your cameras off? We only want the candidates and the moderators, thank you.
Okay, and the next question, we begin with Pamela. Do you support the current efforts in the development of the town center and the CRA? How will you help it come to fruition?
So I've walked that area, and I think about what what would I want? And what do the citizens want? And I think that that's a big question that we need to ask in terms of vision. I'd like to see more visioning done for what? What does it look like in the end? What do we, who do we want to visit? What do we want them to experience? And then go backwards from that and start to recruit people to come in. I like the plan, but I don't love the plan. I'd like to see a little bit more variety, and I'd like to see more of a branding theme so that people felt like they were coming somewhere that had an identity and that it wasn't just a spot with a couple restaurants and a park, but that that it meant something, that there was a feeling and a where where people in our neighboring areas would say, let's go to Oldsmar because. We need to say what is because, and then we need to develop that picture so that it becomes something that people really do want to come to. But that primarily is for the benefit of the people who live here.
Great, thank you. And Steve, do you support the current efforts in the development of the town center and the CRA? And how would, will you help it come to fruition?
I absolutely support the current efforts with downtown and CRA. It's a council priority to aggressively build a downtown. And I was excited when plans were in the works to get it going with the boutique hotel and the need for additional parking down there before we start aggressively building downtown. My goal is, let's reach an agreement, let's get a plan approved, let's get shovels in the ground. I think most of the conversations that I've had as I've been campaigning settle on, I think this is what we're gonna do. I'd like to change the narrative to, this is what we're doing. I think the plans are in place, or they're there to be listened to and approved. But absolutely, as Mayor Seidel has said a million times, downtown, downtown, downtown. I'm all for it, and I can't wait to see it happen.
Great, thank you. And now our next question, we begin with Steve. In Oldsmar, there is a lack of any affordable housing for the elderly. We have many senior citizen residents who have nowhere to go when they can no longer afford or physically take care of their homes. Do you see as a possibility, working with Oldsmar Cares, to create affordable housing?
Working with Oldsmar Cares on affordable, with Oldsmar Cares on affordable housing would absolutely be something that I could see occurring. We'd have to examine exactly what is going on with that and what the feasibility is, where the projects would go, and go through the entire process of coming up with that plan. But in terms of, in general, would I support exploring those options? Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. And Pamela, in Oldsmar, there's the lack of affordable housing for the elderly. We have many senior citizen residents who have nowhere to go when they can no longer afford or physically care for their homes. Do you see as a possibility, working with Oldsmar Cares, to create affordable housing?
So affordable housing is a major challenge in Florida, in Pinellas County, and it's going to be a challenge here in Oldsmar as well. What I would advocate for is being a part of all of the groups that are addressing these issues from our agencies that serve our seniors to to the homeless agencies and people working. There's lots of people already working on affordable housing. And there's multiple different solutions from getting grants to do subsidized housing, you know, and looking at rental assistance programs. What is the best practice? What are people doing? What is a community our size doing that's successful? I like to look at what other people are doing for best practices. Look at what's available, bring that back to the table, and then discuss real workable solutions that help our people here in Oldsmar.
Okay, great, thank you. And now we have another question from the audience. And Pamela, you will go first on this one. What opportunities to preserve Oldsmar's natural resources and commit to a more sustainable in? Let me start over. What are the opportunities to preserve Oldsmar's natural resources and commit to a more sustainable environmentally green city?
So one of the things that Oldsmar has is just beautiful land, our coastal areas. But those coastal areas are low-lying areas. And so we we really need to look towards the future in how we preserve those parks, how we plan for any development that would be in that area. Wanting to preserve land and take care of it, what we already have, that's one conversation. And a conversation I fully support, that we need to do what we can to protect our resources. The second part of that is, how do we make decisions? And those decisions happen case by case. And so it's really hard to say yes or no to this or that because every decision needs to be made. And what I would say is, for me, I would always come at it as as being a steward of our planet, a good steward of our planet, but also a steward of our our future as a city and wanting to blend all of those decisions to always make the most wise decision for the city and as we look towards the future.
Okay, great, thank you. And Steve, what are the opportunities to preserve Oldsmar's natural resources and commit to a more sustainable environmentally green city?
I think Oldsmar is already committed to being that. We were the first to have single-stream recycling. We're the first to have electric charging stations in the region. Back in April, or excuse me, in October 2020 at council, we were presented from the Florida Green Building Coalition that we've reached gold-level certification. Currently, we're working on a climate resiliency plan, and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection granted us $75,000 to come up with a plan to educate businesses and residents about what's going to happen and why the environment's so important. That plan or that amount of money and plan to do that research was back at the council meeting in April 2020. So the FTEP is concerned with all aspects of climate change, but especially coastal communities, like Pam alluded to, like ours, the sea levels rising, and the education of businesses and residents as to how to do that, to approach that in the future.
Great, thank you. Okay, the next question, we begin with Steve. How do you view the partnership of the city council, the city manager, and and the charter official staff and citizen boards? And how can this be strengthened?
I'm being able to view it with all of the public service that I've done for the city already. It's one of my favorite things about living in Oldsmar. We don't have a strong mayor. The electors are at the top of our hierarchy. Then it's the council, then the city manager, and the assistant city manager, and on down through staff. And I absolutely love the way, it's one of the parts of the reasons why I wanted to get involved in government here with that partnership. With Al Braithwaite, Felicia Donnelly, they've both done a tremendous job since they've taken over their roles. In terms of the advisory boards, of course, I'm an advocate for them. I serve on a lot of them. And it's been one of the best educational tools in preparing to run for office and to get involved with the city that is available. So in terms of strengthening it, as I've discussed before, education to the people to let them know that the opportunities are there will one, it will be one of the priorities that I have if I'm elected to council.
Great, thank you. Pamela, how do you view the partnership of the city council, city manager, and charter official staff and citizen boards? And how can this be strengthened?
So I had the opportunity to serve as the chairperson for the ordinance review committee, and that was such a great opportunity to get inside and see how the city works. And my observation from that experience was the same in a lot of my observations, and that's improved communication would be better across the board. I like having goals to work towards and and informing the people who are on these committees. Talking more about, you know, large-range goals would be very helpful to people who sit on these. So I'd like to see more communication between city council and people who serve on those committees. And then staff, it just, we have a fantastic staff who works for the city and just bringing their expertise to the table, maybe even a little bit more. So what what I would do is look at how do we enhance that? How do we improve communication? How do we let the citizens know what these committees are doing? Does anybody know, we just looked through all of the ordinances in Oldsmar and and finished that process? Probably not. So I'd like to see more communication.
Okay, great, thank you. The next question is, how will you promote the city to neighboring municipalities and county organizations to ensure that the city is included in all of the regional planning? Pam, we start with you.
This is a really huge, strong link for me. Coming from Pinellas County government, having worked as the marketing manager and being aware and knowing most of the people who've worked for the county, county leadership, they know me, they know the work that I've done over the years. And then with Good Living Magazine, having worked with so many local agencies and promoting, my job has been to promote all the cities within the county to the people who live here. So I have a really unique perspective of what's happening across Pinellas County and being able to bring those relationships. 16 years' worth of knowledge and working with individuals and and agencies to Oldsmar and to a leadership position at Oldsmar, and then being able to call on those people to understand, first of all, what they do, and then be able to call them and find ways to bring things to Oldsmar that maybe haven't been here before. But that is a very strong strength that I would bring to this job.
You're good, thank you. And Steve, how will you promote the city to neighboring municipalities and county organizations to ensure that the city is included in all regional planning?
Well, it's would certainly be a priority of mine to do that. Even serving on the Ford Pinellas Citizens Advisory Committee, a lot of people on it didn't know much about Oldsmar. So I would educate them about the different things that were going on, about how the plan to redevelop downtown was coming into fruition. They asked me specific questions about the BMX track and basically trying to learn more about the city. I think at some point, folks in Pinellas County weren't even sure that Oldsmar was a municipality. So it's certainly a struggle. I think with, to serve across different organizations throughout the county, I think we do a very good job of doing that now. But the difficulty is, we're a small town and we're on the the border in North County with Hillsborough County. So being able to reach out to folks in Southern Pinellas County is a struggle. But like I said, a priority to make sure that everyone knows that Oldsmar is a fantastic place to live.
Great, thank you. Now, here's a question. If you have the answer, the entire county will be delighted. What is the status of recycling? And Steve, you go first.
Well, in Oldsmar, the status of recycling is it's ongoing. The what's going to happen this year, however, is the four-year contract that we have with Republic Services runs out. So the bidding process is going to be reopened. As some of the municipalities throughout the region have seen, the cost of recycling is going up. The reason for that, the main reason for it, is because China won't accept any recyclables that have more than 0.5 contamination. Meaning, education is key to the residents to keep the contamination levels down. Don't put the wrong things in the recyclable, in the recycle bin, plastic bags, hoses, things of that nature. Make sure you clean your glass containers. But keeping the contamination down is key. What we'll see is the bid process. So in terms of rates increasing, we don't know that yet because we have to open up the bid process once the contract runs out with Republic Services or as it's running out. So it'll be interesting to see what the rates are. But in terms of specifically Oldsmar, that is what's going on with recycling.
Okay, great, thank you. And Pamela, what is the status of recycling?
So I would say the status is unknown, and that's across the board. You know, recycling is one of those ideas that is a sustainable living practice that is really positive and something that people can get on board with. We recycle in our home, and it feels good to know that the glass or the plastic or the paper is being recycled. However, the situation has changed, and we'll have to adapt, not just as a city, but as a county and as a state, as a country, what happens to recycling. However, there are things like reducing your usage, finding ways to to limit the amount of trash, reduce, you can repurpose, you can compost. There are other things we can do. You know, however, some communities are finding it more affordable to just burn the trash and get the money from the from the plant than it is to recycle. And that's just a reality that's unfortunate, given the situation and how, you know, what a good thing recycling is to do, but we may have to adapt.
Great, thank you. And now we have another question from the audience. And Pamela, you will begin this time. Given that the city owns acres of unimproved land, yet there is an enormous housing shortage, what should Oldsmar do to spearhead the housing shortage and possibly use some of this unimproved land for this purpose?
Oh, good question, big question. And how we bring in development is a multi-layered process. You don't want to do too much, but you also want to be able to build and bring more people into your community. So doing it a very balanced way is is really necessary. We're not going to solve the housing issue with what little land we have here in Oldsmar. But when we do develop that land, we want to do it in a smart way. We want to continue to keep the value in our community for the people who already own here. So we want to make really smart decisions about how we develop that land. Environmentally, we need to look at the impact. We do have very low-level areas, and how we build, you know, for the future needs to be taken into consideration. So an easy question to ask, but not an easy question to answer. But I would say with lots of wisdom, research, time, and looking at how we feel about that is is the direction I would take.
Great, thank you. And Steve, given that the city owns acres of unimproved land, and yet there is an enormous house, housing shortage, what should Oldsmar do to spearhead the housing shortage and possibly use some of this unimproved land for this purpose?
In terms of spearheading it, I think it's institute a way to gain more information as to what should be built. There's been recent projects in the south part of town for multipurpose units. There's been townhouses that have been built. I think with Oldsmar in particular, given that we have 14,000 residents, there's a lot of, when it comes to zoning and rezoning and what's being built and the aesthetic value, all of those have to be taken into consideration. I was at a planning board meeting where countless amounts of residents got up and wanted to discuss what was going on because of a specific structure that was being built. So saying that there's a housing crisis, and why don't we just use the land for that? Is, as Pamela did too, a simple question to ask in terms of what the end result would be. Of course, I'd be in favor of more housing to help alleviate that burden, but doing it correctly and maybe not making the decision so quickly to make sure that it's the right decision is what I'd be an advocate for.
Okay, great, thank you. And Steve, the next question is for you. Oldsmar is known for its parks and trails. Should there be more recreational development? Or do you think the existing recreational sites are sufficient?
Existing recreational sites are going to be enhanced. Existing recreational sites are gonna be enhanced. In terms of spearheading more, of course, I'd be in favor of it. I've got two little kids, they're two and four. The more the barrier in terms of options for them. But certainly, examining all of them, making sure that they're economically feasible and the right decision to make would be great. But in terms of the existing recreation options, right now, they're fantastic. However, we can't use the track right now, so we've got to get it fixed. We can't use the spray park right now because it's being renovated. Decisions are being made in order to enhance what's already here. As we've discussed already tonight, an art center, a community center. Especially in the COVID era, being able to use the amphitheater at RE Olds for more events, bringing people down so they can be socially distanced. All of those things are fantastic, but we also have room to enhance them or to add upon them, and of course, I'd be an advocate for that.
Great. Thank you. And Pamela, Oldsmar is known for its parks and trails. Should there be more recreational development, or are existing recreational sites sufficient?
So this is another big issue for me. I think we have great parks and great trails, but what I'd like to see is more recreation programs for a larger cross-section of our population. And I'm gonna be real honest here. I live in the north part of the city, so I'm in Forest Lakes. And I've raised my son for 13, 12, 13 years, and he's never grown up with a park that he could bike to. It's a very different experience if you live in the old part of Oldsmar than if you live in some of the other neighborhoods. So I'd really like to take a look at what we can do to provide more for other areas of Oldsmar. My vision is to see a community center built, a multi-generational community center. Think the Long Center, but maybe scaled more towards Oldsmar, where people can get together and we can have classes and youth center. We do not have a teen program at all. So I'd like to see more recreational programs and an investment in a center where people from all neighborhoods can get together to meet.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And I know that you've mentioned this in various answers as you've gone along, but I'd really like to know, what is your vision for the city of Oldsmar? And what needs to happen to achieve your vision? And Pamela, this one starts with you.
Vision. So I am a person with vision and creativity and passion and problem-solving abilities. And so when I think of Oldsmar, I think of home. And making it the best home it can possibly be for the people who live here and for the businesses that call it home. And that's a vision that would include a very vibrant community for restaurants and our retail businesses, a vibrant community for the people who come to work for our manufacturers. We have a huge manufacturing population here in our city. They come and they live here during the day. And so my vision would be taking into account those folks who come in during the day and then the people who are here as residents. And that vision really is centered around that community center and the downtown area and branding Oldsmar to be a destination that is a great home for everybody who's here.
Great. Thank you. And Steve, what is your vision for the city of Oldsmar? And what needs to happen to achieve your vision?
I think what I'd like to see, most of all, with my vision is that we have the development downtown, where it's a walkable downtown and a place where you can get your golf cart there. My vision is that we, with the complete streets programs that we utilize, that there's more bicycling, more golf cart usage. Some means to cross Tampa Road that's safe. Maybe we can't get a passageway for golf carts to go over, but I'd like to see if we can. Some sort of pedestrian bridge, a bicycle path or catwalk that we can get over and be able to connect the entire city. What I see ultimately is everybody, no matter where they live, north of Tampa Road or south of Tampa Road, can gather and could do so safely and seamlessly. In terms of moving forward, like I said, we're raising our kids here. So I want to create a place where they want to come back to after they go to college and on to grad school, hopefully, that they want to raise their own children here too.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, that concludes our questions for you for the evening. You each have one minute to do a final wrap-up tonight. And we begin with Pamela to start her wrap-up.
Thank you, and thank you for everybody coming tonight and for those who watch this later. When I talk about Oldsmar's home, I picture it as home to the residents who fall asleep each night in a safe, quiet community and home to our business owners who show up each day to have a robust and prosperous day. I believe as city leaders, we need to look out for both. And that doesn't mean just maintaining the status quo, but it means going out and finding new and creative ways to be better everywhere. Creative leadership is my signature, branding is my superpower. I will bring a specialized set of skills to the city council that will be an excellent complement to the existing council. We have a lawyer, an engineer, and business owners. Elect me, and I will add creative energy and a commitment to improving communication with our citizens and across the board. I believe in citizen-led government and transparency when it comes to budgets and development. And I believe that citizens need an opportunity to weigh in. I will be Oldsmar's champion. I will use my PR skills to recruit businesses and new amenities to our city. Together, we are Oldsmar, and this is our home.
Thank you, Pamela. And now Steve, you have one minute for a closing statement.
Thank you again to the chamber and the League of Women Voters. I've been looking forward to having this opportunity for a very long time. Again, with what I've done in terms of service to the city in order to train myself to do this specific job, I think that I've been able to get that point across to everyone. I have spent that time away for my wife and my kids to make sure that I'm helping to create a fantastic place to raise both of our children and enhance upon everything that's here. In terms of being able to learn more about me, I invite everyone to go to steveforoldsmar.com or send me an email at steveforoldsmar@gmail.com. And I'd be happy to take your questions so you can learn more about what you heard about tonight, or if you could ask me something that wasn't asked tonight. I know a lot of questions were asked from the audience. I don't think all of them were, so I certainly would like to address them if they're still out there. So thank you very much again. It's been an honor to be here tonight. Thank you.
And thank both of you for your wonderful knowledge, answers, and interest in the city of Oldsmar. I'd like to remind everyone, Election Day is March 9. You, if you're not registered to vote, you have until February 8 to register. And you can register at the supervisor of elections office or on her website. And the numbers and website are listed here for you. If you would like to request a ballot, a mail ballot, you have until February 27 to call the SOE's office and have one sent to you in the mail. So good luck to both of you, and thank you from the League of Women Voters.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth, and thank you to everybody at the League of Women Voters, North Pinellas. I do just want to let everybody know that we are gonna be compressing this file, and we will have it on our Upper Tampa Bay Chamber, utbchamber.com. We will have it available there tomorrow. We will have it on our Facebook page, so find us on Facebook. We will also get it to the city so that they can get that out. And as I understand it, the five pictures that you see on the screen should be all that you see on the video. So we apologize for the little hiccup at the beginning, but we got it all worked out, and we sure do thank the League of Women Voters. And having been on that side of the microphone before, I know it's not an easy task. And I think you both did, given the circumstances of virtually handling this. I think you all did a great job, and I think, you know, the League of Women Voters also did a great job. And thank you to our timers and to the people monitoring the chatroom. Thank you to Kathy and Ann from our clerk's office for also keeping us on track and so that we had a backup plan in case, you know, something were to happen 2020-like. We were ready for it. So thank you again, and good luck to everybody. And if you need to get out and register to vote, get out and do it. And we don't really care who you vote for, just get out and vote. So thank you so much for attending tonight, and look for the video tomorrow.